They're the eyes and ears of the neighborhood, providing an extra set of eyes to the police. If you see something, say something.
It absolutely makes a difference because it will weed out the crime because they know that we're saying hello and greeting and we've made eye contact and that I see you.
It's easy, you know, you're going to walk your dog anyway, you're going to say hello to your neighbors anyway, you're going to be walking through on a daily basis. So it's just important to contribute back to your community.
Orlando City Council. It's budget season, it's July, so we're going to focus on that in this workshop. This past year and a half COVID has brought challenges to our community like we've never seen before and as a city. We didn't let that derail the important work we do to serve our residences and businesses every day, to provide them with the core services and amenities that they expect and need from their municipal government. We adapted, we remained flexible and continued our commitment to excellent service to our community. And it's thanks to our dedicated employees who worked incredibly hard day after day during this crisis that we were able to maintain our standard of excellence. Some departments managed unprecedented and unexpected increases in demand. For our solid waste staff, as you would probably expect, garbage and recycling and yard waste collection was up 20% as residents stayed at home and did more things. Our permitting division issued more than 31,000 building permits during 2020 and is projected to issue 33,000 by the end of this year, proving Orlando's resilience and determination to continue to assist in moving development projects forward even during the COVID-19 challenge. Our parks became popular, safe gatherings places and we reassigned 22 FPR staff members to serve as park rangers to enhance safety and provide education related to the virus. And other departments had to totally reimagine the way they delivered services. Nearly every division in our economic development department created new programs and funding to support our local and small businesses, implementing temporary programs like expanding outdoor seating and providing free parking in downtown. FPNR staff served our youth through the creation of learning pods and more than 5,000 students were served during this challenging learning environment. And business and financial services, along with housing and community development, economic development, created new and amended existing programs to provide financial assistance to businesses and food assistance for our residents. Several departments had staff step outside their normal world to provide various services. Employees in fire and police and venues and FPNR and transportation and executive departments worked to establish free mobile testing sites that rotated weekly through our six commission districts. We provided more than 5,400 COVID-19 tests at 26 community events, and then they stepped up to make the vaccine accessible to residents. And FPR employees worked as operational staff for isolation and recovery centers to protect our homeless. And through all this, our city employees have risen to the challenge and gone above and beyond during this time. And it's because of their hard work that we're able to maintain a balanced budget and bring forward today a budget that proposes to continue to do the same, delivering our core services and amenities that our residents depend on without raising our millage rate. Initially last year, through our budgeting process, we responded to the call to end systemic racism in our country and expanded our efforts to make Orlando a more equitable city for all. We made investments to strengthen our collective efforts to create a city where every resident is equally valued, equally protected and has equitable access to opportunities to help them thrive. And this is an ongoing mission and can't be accomplished in just a single budget. And that's why this budget ensures that they remain a top priority with continued funding to enhance police accountability and transparency, expand our youth programming and outreach and further economic development issues to advance broad-based prosperity, job opportunities and skills training. So commissioners, I want to thank each of you for your hard work and your passion and your commitment, your unique perspectives, as we continue to work together for equity efforts, ensuring core services and delivering the high quality that our residents expect and doing it in a fiscally responsible manner. To our city employees, all of you, some of you are in here, but 3,300 or so are not in the chamber, but to everyone, I want to say thank you for your service and your sacrifice as we, on behalf of the residents of the city, beautiful. So with that, I'll turn it over to the very capable professionals in this regard. So Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Michelle McCrimmon. Michelle, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners and those of us here in chambers, as well as those out on Zoom. Clarif, I hope we don't break the Internet from all the people tuning in today for the workshop. So this time last year, I was meeting with you to go over the fiscal year 21 budget virtually. I had just cleared off my desk to give the impression of a clean desk behind me when I presented to you. It was just over a week after Disney had reopened. They had been closed for four months. We were going into fiscal year 21 with a lot of uncertainty. We didn't really know. We knew COVID had a big impact on us so far and we didn't know if there was an ending point in sight. And so happy to be here with you face to face and present to you our fiscal 22 budget. So a couple of items on the agenda. We want to go through and talk about the COVID-19 impacts, not only on fiscal year 20, but also where we're at this year. Talk about our COVID-19-related assistance as well. We'll give you a brief update on fiscal year 21, where we're at now. We'll talk about just where we're at in the budget cycle and then, of course, we'll spend some time on our fiscal 22 budget and then talk about next steps. So I thought it would be helpful for you to see a comparison. Our fiscal year 20 adopted budget, although COVID hit in fiscal year 20, when we prepared the budget, we really had no idea that was around the corner for us. So if you look at fiscal year 20 as kind of our normal time compared to fiscal year 21, and then fiscal year 22 is our proposed budget. So from a property tax perspective, again, those are based on values as of January 1st each year. So for fiscal year 21, we really weren't impacted by COVID from a property tax perspective because those were values as of January 1st, 2020, prior to COVID hitting. Fiscal year, or in 2021, that was the big question mark. We didn't really know what impact that was going to have for us. And you can see the increase between fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22 is a lot lower than that change you see from fiscal year 20 and 21. Fiscal year 22, we have a 4% increase in property taxes. We're grateful for the increase, but it is a much flatter increase than what we've seen in past years. For the OUC payment, you see a drop of about 4.4 million between fiscal year 20 and 21, and that was because we didn't really know what the impact was going to be for OUC, for its customers, its commercial, especially its commercial customers. And so that OUC payment dropped down. And so while that payment did go up by $2.5 million for fiscal year 22, you can see we're still not quite at that fiscal year 20 level that we were before. And then from a sales tax perspective, we still have significant decreases in our sales tax revenues. So while we're starting to see some improvements during this fiscal year, we still have anticipated a fairly flat budget for fiscal year 22 in anticipation of just, we're just not sure when that growth is going to come back. And you can see that difference between fiscal year 20, kind of that normal year, versus where we will, where we're projecting for fiscal year 22. And then state revenue sharing is the same, same kind of story. We're basically proposing a flat budget for fiscal year 22 compared to fiscal year 21, which is still quite a bit less than our, than our normal. Our local business taxes have remained fairly consistent. So you can see fiscal year 20, fiscal year 22, the numbers are fairly the same. And we're actually expecting fiscal year 21 to come in pretty close to what we budgeted for fiscal year 22. So fairly few changes within the local business taxes. So those were general fund dollars. If we look at some of our enterprise funds, the numbers maybe look a little bit strange because, for example, if you look at water reclamation and solid waste, you can see the fiscal year 20 revenues, fiscal year 21 revenues were actually budgeted at a higher amount. And then fiscal year 22, we're dropping them down, kind of closer to that fiscal year 20 level. And the reason is, in fiscal year 21, we just did not anticipate the impact that the commercial customers would have on those revenues. And so those revenues were just much lower than anticipated during this fiscal year. But in turn, they've managed their expenses. So while revenues have gone down, they've also lowered their expenses as well. So you see that especially in water reclamation and solid waste. But parking, we had budgeted a fairly flat budget between fiscal year 20 and 21, and then you see a pretty steep decrease in fiscal year 22. Again, just didn't anticipate the impact of the businesses downtown, the reduced events downtown that that would have in our parking revenues. But that team as well reduced their expenses along with those revenues. And then the venues fund, those budgets are based on actual booked events, so those can fluctuate based on, you know, new events that, that come online. So what's been budgeted for fiscal year 22 for venues is based on the events they know of, but then that can change as, as a recovery happens and as events get booked. So from an expenditure impact, all of those programs that the mayor mentioned, all of the employees that were redeployed, all of the testing and vaccination sites, food distribution, park ranger learning hubs. We also had employees that were quarantining because of their exposure or their testing positive. And so we had to backfill a lot of those positions. We had additional healthcare costs incurred for those COVID tests or other COVID-related healthcare costs. And so in total, the city incurred about $10 million in costs related to COVID. About just over 6 million of that was in fiscal year 20 and then the remaining four was in fiscal year 21. In fiscal year 20, we had also told you about the contribution that the city made in, to project care for utility assistance So this time last year, we told you that we would seek every dollar possible to recover any dollars that we could for those COVID-related costs. And so I won't go through all of the different items here, but these are some grants that we received to cover primarily our PPE, the personal protective equipment. The amount at the bottom is the CARES Act funding, the reimbursement that we received from Orange County. So just a reminder, the city didn't get any direct allocation of CARES Act dollars. The county received that and then they set aside a portion of that to have available to the local governments within Orange County to get reimbursed for COVID-related costs. And so we received $5.7 million of the county's CARES Act And then we also have submitted a reimbursement request to FEMA for mutual aid for our time administering the COVID-19 vaccine sites, and that totaled to about $720,000. And then we're actively putting together a reimbursement package to FEMA for just under $700,000 for other COVID-related costs. So really just trying to maximize any kind of recovery from, from our costs. And so that total, total recovery of those $10 million is about $8 million that we're anticipating to recover. Housing received a total of almost $26 million in COVID-related housing dollars over the last year. And so I'll draw your attention to the top line, which is the fiscal year 20 coronavirus relief fund. That was rental assistance of $2.5 million. That was the program that ran through the heart of Florida United Way last year. And the $8.7 million is the emergency rental assistance program that's currently going on now. And then there's another second round of rental assistance of $6.9 million. And you'll see that round two that's on the third line. Those funds can, just have to be spent by September 2025. So from a timing perspective, those dollars can really go out to help people for a much longer period of time. Housing has spent or encumbered over $10 million already to various organizations. And you've seen these come through the council agendas. You've seen some pretty hefty housing items for your approval and a lot of those have been to program these, these grant dollars. So between that $10 million, $10 million that's been encumbered or paid out, plus the emergency rental assistance, they've made a lot of great progress on really putting these dollars to So the city was allocated a portion of the $350 billion American Rescue Plan Act dollars, or ARPA, as you've probably heard it. And it's important to distinguish between the CARES Act dollars and these ARPA dollars because first, the city, as I mentioned before, the city did not get a direct allocation of CARES Act. So in this case, we were directly allocated these ARPA dollars, totaling $58 million. And secondly is CARES Act, those dollars were really created for immediate assistance. And you saw that with some of the deadlines that the Treasury had committed, where they said, okay, here's the dollars today and you have nine months to spend them. So it was clear the intent was to get those dollars, help the door to those people that needed it. With respect to ARPA dollars, we have to obligate those funds or commit those funds by December 31st, 2024, but they don't actually have to be spent until December 31st, 2026. So it's clear that we need to be thoughtful about how we program these dollars. And the Treasury has also been clear in their guidance that they really want to make sure there's long-term impact that these dollars are, are having on groups. And so staff is currently working on a plan. And in that second box there, you can see that the, there's been some city priorities presented here. So homelessness, affordable housing, broadband access, economic opportunity and downtown revitalization. And so Treasury also requires quarterly reports to be presented and we also have to disclose those quarterly reports on our city website. So there's clear, transparent information on how we're spending the dollars. And not only the actual spend of the dollars, but also the Treasury is looking for objectable, objective and measurable results from that spend. So again, kind of going back to that long-term positive impact, they want to make sure that, that there's objective results from these dollars that we're spending. So staff is putting together potential projects that meet these priorities and that are also allowable to be used under the, under the ARPA Treasury rules. And so some of those rules include addressing negative economic impacts, replacing lost public sector revenue and investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. And there's a very broad flexibility on how, how those can be spent. But it's clear from the Treasury, the focus is to help the communities that were the hardest hit from COVID. So one thing to point out, even though there's $58 million to program, we also know that the ARPA program is going to result in likely some additional other grant opportunities. And so staff has been compiling projects that maybe they do qualify for ARPA dollars, or maybe they don't, but there could be grant opportunities that we're seeking. So our grants office is poised and ready to be on the lookout for these additional grant opportunities so that we can try and maximize as many funding sources as possible. And housing has also received some ARPA funding as well. They've received a award notification letter of $4.8 million and they're anticipating to receive those dollars likely in January of '22. So a little bit of ways out. So again, when we told you that we would try and maximize as many opportunities to recover from costs incurred from COVID, our venues and grants team have also applied for the SBA shuttered venues grant back in May. So they carefully reviewed the qualifications to see whether a city-owned venue could actually qualify to apply. And sure enough, we could. And so that application has been submitted. So quick fiscal year 21 update. Last September, you all adopted a 21 budget of just over $1.4 We currently, as of the end of our last audit, we ended the year, so we ended the year fiscal year 20 roughly about the same from a reserve perspective, at about 26.3%. So you'll see that yellow line on the chart is our policy minimum, the green line is our policy maximum. And so we're hovering just above our policy maximum there. So still maintaining strong reserves. It's a great demonstration of our city's financial health, having, having the reserve level that we do. But it also helps to absorb any kind of unexpected activities. So as we go into hurricane season, and even though we typically have financial assistance from FEMA, we still have to spend those dollars upfront for extensive cleanup costs, extensive repairs. And so having these reserve dollars here available to kind of weather, weather those expenses before we get reimbursed also helps us through, through that as well. And so those strong reserves also contribute to our strong bond ratings as well. And so we continue to maintain our high debt ratings and Fitch actually just affirmed our AAA rating as well. And one of the quotes from Fitch is at the top there where Fitch has said, "The AAA issuer default rating is supported by the city's high financial resilience, which incorporates both significant reserves and budgetary tools and history of stable financial results." So really the decisions that you all have made as council with conservative budgeting, your support for the, the reserve level that we have has, has certainly contributed to this. And staff, we work, we work hard every day to try and keep these, these ratings up for the city. And it also helps us to kit competitive rates when we go out to market to issue new debt or to refinance any debt as well. So although every September you approve a budget, we know that things change. We get new grants, there's new projects, there's staffing needs, there's, there's lots of things that happen throughout the year. And so we have a budget review committee process that basically approves, reviews and approves those budget change requests. And then it ultimately comes to you for approval through the council agenda. And so we had a few actions during the year. We've added 14 positions within the general fund. Roughly 11 of them were families, parks and recreation related for the PKZ expansion and the youth employment program. So Lisa Early had gone through those at the recent workshop, those additional positions that were added. We had several grants awards, awarded, so almost $24 million in grants, and a lot of those were housing-related that were mentioned on an earlier slide. And then capital projects. We had two joint participation agreements with OUC for two significant southeast road projects, Dowden Road and Narcuse From a fiscal year 21 perspective, where do we think we're going to end the year? We think we're, our revenues are going to come in slightly under budget, but in turn, we also think our expenses are going to come in under budget. We haven't touched our contingency reserve, so we're expecting to have, you know, maybe some kind of modest surplus at the end of fiscal year 21, assuming no surprises, of course. So I'll just pause for a second and give some reminders of our budget. So our fiscal year runs October 1st to September 30th. We spend a lot of time focusing on the general fund primarily because it's about 40% of our entire fund balance. And it's also where most of our operating, it's, it's our operate, primary operating fund. So, you know, when you think about public safety, police and fire and family parks and recreation, it's a lot of the, the operating costs that, that we know our, our residents care about. But we also have separate funds for standalone businesses. So I've talked about water reclamation, parking, venues, solid waste. Those are enterprise funds or business-type funds. And so those are funds where the ratepayers pay those revenues and those are to cover all of the operating expenses. So the idea is that those funds, the rates that are charged cover the expenses that are needed to, to run those funds. And then we have other special revenue funds. So those are very specific where the funds have, have limited uses. And so the best example is, is the housing grant fund, where housing will get a grant that can only be used for where housing will get a grant that can only be used for the purpose of that grant. We can't use those funds for paying police officers or firefighters. So our budget cycle, our budget process starts in February and culminates in September. And so where we're at today is in the adjust phase, where we're presenting this workshop to you. And then we'll be making some adjustments to the budget and then ultimately presenting to you the final budget in September. So now we'll get into the fiscal year '22 budget. When we started the budget process, we started in February, as I mentioned before. So we let people start the fiscal year, get a few months into it, and then start thinking about the next year. But this year, we asked the departments to submit a flat budget. We knew that our, we knew that we were going to have some limitations with revenues. And so we asked them to issue a flat budget and also issue some potential budget cuts, just in case we needed to exercise those cuts. And sure enough, they did that. Because at that point, we just didn't know what property taxes were going to look like. And so we wanted to have that available just in case we needed. So you'll see when we get into the general fund that pretty much our growth in the general fund was limited to property taxes and the increase in the OUC dividend. And so we didn't need to exercise any of those cuts that the departments had, um, had in their back pockets. But the fiscal year '22 budget is tighter. And you'll see that as we get into the details.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, can I ask a question? As we were talking about going into fiscal year 2022, I'm interested in understanding our year-to-date performance, you know, our budget versus our actual, because there are a lot of unknowns. Is that information available?
We can certainly get that to you, absolutely. So we can get that to you either now, and then we can discuss it at our next briefing with you. But absolutely, we, we, there's also quarterly reports that we can, we're about to issue our third quarter report in the next. Yeah, so the next council meeting, we'll have that, our third quarter report. And so that shows exactly what you're asking for, the budget to actual. And so maybe we can go through that in a little bit more detail at our briefing with you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sure. So the city, as the local government, provides these core functions. So, you know, we've listed them here. These are all the services that are near and dear to residents, businesses, visitors, you know, public safety, police, fire, transportation, solid waste, families, parks, and recreation, streets in stormwater, water reclamation permitting. But we know there's other, many other needs in the community, and we fund those as we can. And so as we previously discussed, the ARPA funds can really help us to fund some of those other functions that are maybe outside of the core functions that we, that we do every day, but that are still important to our citizens. And so we know this is the first time you're going to be seeing these fiscal year '22 numbers between now and September. We'll be refining those numbers. We may get some new information that comes along. And so we've got a little bit of time to tweak those, so to speak, before you approve them in September. So the numbers that you see today may look slightly different in September. And we usually try and highlight any of those changes to you. So I'll kind of get you acclimated to this chart here. On the left-hand side is our revenues by source. And this is our all-funds budget. So this is everything together. And so our fiscal year '22 all-funds budget is proposed at just over $1.4 billion. So it's less than a percentage higher than what the all-funds budget was in fiscal year '21. And you'll see that on the left-hand side, the revenues by source, the largest revenue source is charges for services at just over 20% of our total revenues. And that includes our enterprise funds, or our water reclamation, our solid waste, our streets in stormwater, for those services that are provided. And then related, on the right-hand side of the chart, when you look at expenses by department, the largest department is Public Works, who provides those, those services as well. And their percentage is at 19%. For the most part, the percentage allocations are pretty consistent between fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '21. So again, we'll spend most of our time talking about the general fund budget. And so I had mentioned earlier that when you look at our general fund revenues, so the first column is our fiscal year '21 adopted budget. The second column is the fiscal year '22 recommended budget. And so when you look at that change column, you can see that the biggest story there is property taxes and franchise fees. And that franchise fees is where most of that OUC payment is included in. We've got a decrease in charges for services, with most of that being reduced fees that we've seen in family parks and recreation. And so we adjusted the budget. We saw those reduced revenues this year, and so we've adjusted those revenues for fiscal year '22. And so just by comparison, in fiscal year '20, our revenues grew in the general fund by about 5.7%. Fiscal year '21, it grew by 3.2%. And then in fiscal year '22, we're seeing a 2.1% increase. So we're starting to see some lower increases from those revenue increases flattening out. So we'll spend a little bit of time to talk about property taxes. In fiscal year '20, property taxes increased by about 9.5%. Between fiscal year '20 and '21, they increased by about 10.3%. And so this year, property taxes increased by about 4%. So you can see that still increased, which is good. But you can see that increase dropped quite a bit. And again, as the mayor mentioned, all of our assumptions, our revenue assumptions include no millage rate increases. The property taxes are the largest revenue source for the general fund. So that's certainly why we, we pay very close attention to it and spend some time talking about it. So it's about 46% of our general fund revenues. And while you all, as the council, control the millage rate that's charged, the Orange County Property Appraisers Office calculates the taxable value. So there's a lot of words on this slide, and we really just, most of it is just sharing kind of the impact of the Save Our Homes exemptions. You know, what does that, what does that translate to for the city? The first bullet is the city's total assessed value is $39 billion in total property within the city. And so that's increased by about $1.5 billion or 4% from 2020. Again, the values as of January 1st, 2020 compared to January 1st, 2021. Of that increase of $1.5 billion, new construction was about $983 million of that. So that's about 2/3 of that increase in the total assessed value. Additionally, when we look at our, the total assessed value within the city, about 2/3 of that is commercial, and 1/3 is residential. So while we're seeing a really strong residential market right now, and even as of January 1st, 2021, fairly strong, when we think about the Save Our Homes exemptions that we have in place that limit the amount of growth in assessed value, as well as the fact that that's really just 1/3 of the properties within the city, significant increases in market value still wouldn't move that, move that nugget very much from a property tax perspective for us. But impacts in the commercial properties would, would more because it's 2/3 of the properties within the city. So it's, it's good and bad. We, we avoid any significant, um, large, you know, adjustments, high or low. It's stabilized because of those, those caps. But you can see that now with COVID having a deeper impact on commercial properties, you can see why that we would see some flatter increases in our property taxes. And sure enough, the commercial property assessed value, the market values basically were flat. And then the assessed value only increased by about 3% within commercial values. So we don't have the, all of the data points because we don't calculate this. This is coming from the Property Appraisers Office. But we're going to be keeping a close eye on this over the next year, just to see, you know, what kind of potential changes we, we might expect for next year's property taxes. So charges for services, the fiscal year '22 budget is on the far right-hand side of this chart. And you can see that for the most part, it's, it's about the same except for the department fees. And those are the decreases in the families, parks, and recreation fees that I mentioned earlier. Intergovernmental and sales and use tax is, from a fiscal year '21 to '22 perspective, is fairly flat from a budget perspective. And the same with other revenue as well. When you look at the two far right-hand columns, those are, those are fairly consistent. So as we get into the general fund expenditures, just some highlights of the budget. The proposed budget includes 4% across-the-board salary increases and increases that are based on collective bargaining agreements as well. We have negligible increases in our medical and premiums. There's basically one category, which is employee and spouse, that has some adjustments to it. Our pension costs increased by a total of $1.8 million. So $1.2 million for the police pension plan, $500,000 for the fire pension plan, and $150,000 for the general pension plan. The big blessing this year, in this year's budget, is that our OPEB, which is our post-employment retirement costs, decreased by $2.6 million. That's actuarially determined. Our actuary determined that we had enough money in the bank essentially for our funding this year. And so we didn't have to put any more dollars into that trust for this year. And so that, that decreased those costs by $2.6 million. The general fund includes a $6 million contingency. So our normal contingency in a normal year is about $5 million. We bumped that to $7 million last year because of COVID and just not knowing what to expect. And so we didn't think we wanted to go quite back down to that $5 million. So we met in the middle, and now our contingency is at $6 million. We also included some increases in capital as well. So we've increased our transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund. And then we've also increased our transfers to the Designated Revenue Fund. So it's basically kind of one-time projects. We've increased those by about $6 million. And of course, there's never enough capital funds. So we had total requests of $73 million in capital or project-related requests. And our funding covers about 1/3 of that at $25 million. So when you look at our proposed budget by use, so the fiscal year '21 budget is on the left, the fiscal year '22 recommended budget is on the right, you can see the, you know, vast majority of the changes are in salaries and wages. So those are the contractual negotiated pay increases. We have 13 positions that were added to the general fund through BRC. And then there were three more budgeted positions that you'll see when we get into the details by department. Benefits, we see a decrease in that, and that's primarily because of the post-employment retirement costs going down. And then within supplies and contractual services, we've got some additional IT costs. We've got some body-worn cameras that are included in the budget. FPR had about $1 million in ball field maintenance. So we had some, even though we went in with a flat budget, there are certain things that had to be programmed into the budget this year. And so that's why you see some increases in those areas. And then in other operating expenses, we had some debt service falloff from, from getting paid. We decreased our contingency by $1 million. And then we, we moved some costs up, up above into that supplies and contractual line. And then our transfers increased as well, related to funding more of those projects through capital and designated revenue. So that's why you see an increase in, in that category. And this is the same chart, just broken out. So you can see what each of those categories represents as a total percentage of budget. And you can see that salaries and benefits are about 64% of our entire general fund budget. And most of those categories are consistent with last year. When you look at the breakdown of benefits, you can see that most of the benefit cost is related to pension benefits, healthcare, payroll taxes. That's certainly the, the heavier piece of the benefit cost. And then our other operating, just so that you know what is that other, what's in that other category, we have the tax increment payments. So those are the payments to the CRAs. Debt service is included in there. And then grants and incentives in our contingency. So when you think about our benefit costs and what we can control within the benefits, payroll taxes, you can't really do a whole lot with that. Pension costs, you can't do a whole lot with that without substantively changing the actual pension plan. But healthcare costs, you know, we, we went self-insured several years ago. And so this chart here is a great picture of, the, the green is what the industry is seeing in terms of increases in premiums. And so this, these are increases, not only for the city, that could impact the city, but it's also increases that could impact employees because you have employees with spouses and dependents on their plan. And so you can see that these are significant increases year over year in the industry. And then in the blue, you can see the very small increases that the city has had to implement. And that is just a result of, you know, great management of our plan. Our HR team works very hard to manage and administer wellness initiatives, education, different programs. And so that, that has a double effect. It helps the health and wellness of our employees, but then also certainly has a positive fiscal impact to our budget as well. So if we look at the general fund department expenses by, or expenses by general fund department, the way this is ordered is in percentage change. So even though you might see some high percentages, there's some fairly small dollars in here as well. But really, not a whole lot has been, there's not a whole lot of changes with respect to new programs that are included in this budget. And we'll get into the details by department in the next slides. And so this is just a graphical, you know, showing the percentage of, that each department plays as a percentage of total. You can see that public safety, when you add together the police and fire percentages, that totals 57%. And just a reminder, our property taxes are 46% of our total budget. So our property taxes don't even cover the total cost of our public safety. But it just goes back to, you know, um, that that's a, an important program and important, important that we provide those, those strong services, the strong public safety services to our residents. So if we dive into some details by department, I'll give you a little bit of the lay of the land on these slides. So the left-hand side of the slide, the top left are the general fund divisions that are included in the general fund portion of the budget. The bottom left are the other operating funds that are included or added with those general funds within the all funds budget. On the top right-hand side of the slide, you'll see the fiscal year 22 budget, the general fund dollar budget, and then the percentage of increase or decrease in the budget, the number of employees that are included with any changes, um, any additions of positions in the budget, and then the all funds, um, proposed budget and the percentage change. And then we've got some program highlights, either new things or just continued programming that are included in the budgets. So from an economic development perspective, their budget, um, slightly decreased. And that was, um, primarily due to some changes in some split funding positions. They did have one new position to assist with virtual board meetings. Um, as, as you all know, with, um, COVID and, you know, switching to all virtual and then coming back face to face, and we've been holding hybrid virtual meetings. And so that takes a lot of administration to conduct those meetings. And so they've asked for an additional position to assist with that. And then the economic development budget continues to fund over $4 million in business assistance, economic, um, business assistance and funding for economic development and incubator organizations. And so we just saw that at a recent workshop, um, some of those organizations. And so that funding is continuing to be programmed here. There's also funding included in their all funds budget for EDIS, which is their online systems. The mayor talked about all the permitting, or all the permits that were processed. And so all the business that was able to be done virtually. And so that's due to their EDIS system. And so they've got some additional dollars, um, budgeted to, um, for enhancements to that system. And then of course, um, funding is included also for the main streets as well. The executive offices, they saw a very slight decrease in their overall budget. Some, some highlights within their budget, they've got an additional clerk position that's been requested, um, to help administer virtual meetings. Uh, we've got some additional funding to build the equity officials, um, operational funding. So that's included in this year's budget. We've got $100,000 budgeted for public record management and preservation project. We continue funding, um, $3.6 million in community organization, uh, funding as well. We've continued funding for the rental assistance program of about $600,000. There is additional funding for city elections this year, which is $186,000. And then we've got, um, additional training dollars allocated for, um, employees of about $100,000. Families Parks and Recreation, um, they saw a fairly significant budget increase of about $2.1 million this year. That is primarily, um, we've got 11 new positions and some reclasses. So a good chunk of that increase was in their salaries and benefits from not only increases, but also, um, the salaries and benefits for those new positions, um, for the kids zone and youth employment. And then there's about $900,000 in, um, additional ballpark maintenance, um, costs as well that are included in the budget. And then there's full year funding for Rosemont Gym and Lake Lorna Dune Park. We have partial year funding included in fiscal year 21, and so of course increased for 22. Uh, we continue to fund the My Brother's Keeper program. And then, um, we've got about 3.6 million dollars in capital programming for parks, playgrounds, and recreation facilities for, um, Families Parks and Rec. The fire department saw a small decrease in their, uh, overall budget. And there, but they do have a very significant, um, capital funding for a outdoor fire training facility. Their, um, the current facility that they, they conduct training at now is at Mid Florida Tech Fire Academy, and that's going to be closing soon. And so they don't have an alternative location to train. Um, and so we'll be, um, funding about $6 million to build that outdoor training location for them to continue that. They've also got $1.2 million in equipment replacement funding. And then we've continued to fund the diversity funding of about $200,000. That's not included in the fire budget. That's included in a non-departmental budget, but that is for, um, funding, uh, the recommendations from Mayor Dyer's Diversity Task Force. Housing's budget went up about $1.2 million. So just a reminder, um, housing staff is actually, um, in another housing fund. And so the general fund actually doesn't have any housing staff, um, included in the headcount. Um, housing, most of their grants have some kind of administrative dollars that can help cover the cost of staff and their administrative. But anything that can't be covered by those grant dollars is covered by the general fund. So that's where the general fund budget comes into play for housing. So there's an assistant division manager position that was added through, um, the fiscal year 21 BRC. And then this budget also funds an additional housing and development compliance coordinator position. With all of the additional housing grants that they've received, it requires a lot of monitoring, a lot of reporting. And so they needed some additional administrative support to manage those programs from the additional grants. And then we're happy that we have also included about $1.9 million in state housing funding or ship dollars, um, which is great. Probably about half of what we were hoping for, but nonetheless, we're grateful the number isn't zero, uh, like we saw last year. But that is also included in their budget. So business and financial services saw an increase of about $1.2 million. That's primarily due to some, um, the body worn cameras, um, that are included in the IT budget. So contracts like that are managed by IT, um, because it's something that they're heavily involved in. They work on the, um, procurement of that. And, um, because it's, it's heavy technology, um, that's something that, that they manage. So that's within the business and financial services, um, budget. And there's one position that's been added to business and financial services within procurement. That was done through BRC. There's no real fiscal impact to that because there were two positions dropped, three added. So the net one difference, but, um, from a dollar perspective, it was, it was neutral, cost neutral. And then, um, there's some, uh, technology projects that are included in business and financial services. We've got some time clocks and some additional workday, which is our, uh, HR and financial system. So some additional projects to enhance our, our use of that system. And then we've got about a million dollars budgeted for, uh, solar panel. So continuing, um, our renewable energy projects. Police saw a very minor increase in their budget, um, about $186,000. There's been, um, two additional, um, positions that are included in the budget for, uh, civilian positions within communications. Oh, excuse me, police was 2.1 million. Sorry about that. And that was the two additional positions. And then plus they had some increases in their pension costs. And then from a capital perspective, um, we've got some standard equipment replacements included in their budget. And then we've also included pay increases for the crossing guards, um, getting them up to the $15 an hour, which is per the mayor's, um, getting all of our employees to three year plan to get them into $15 an hour. So we've got our crossing guards up there. Public Works saw a very small increase, um, in their budget, um, from a, on the general fund side of about $130,000. We've added a deputy director position in there. Their solid waste budget does assume a 4% rate increase as well. And then we've got two additional project managers in construction management. Transportation, they have a decrease in their budget of about $1.1 million, but that's, um, all related to, we've got some, uh, decrease in Sun Rail transition costs that handover to the locals has been pushed off for a few years. And so we didn't need to fund those dollars in fiscal year 22. And then we also had some debt service for Sun Rail Station fall off. So that's, that's the source of their, um, decrease in the transportation revenue, I mean, uh, the transportation budget. And then our non-departmental budget did increase, um, by just over $7 million. That's, we had some, um, increases in transfers to capital and designated revenue, um, for different projects. We also added $500,000 in, uh, funding for, uh, diversity and equity initiatives. And then those were offset by decreases in our contingency of a million. And then we had some debt service, um, decreases as well. And the budget here also continues to budget the alternative dispatch for about $750,000. And then this is also where we're holding the budget for the OFD diversity initiatives. So these are our city staffing. So the fiscal year 22 is on the far right-hand side. You can see that the numbers are pretty consistent with fiscal year 21. Um, we strategically add positions, um, and continue to look for efficiencies as we deliver city services. So we've highlighted some select funds here for you because we spent most of our time talking about the general fund. We just don't have enough time to, to go through every single fund at the city. So we've highlighted a, a few of our larger funds here, and we've talked about a lot of them, um, previously. So our capital improvement fund, you see some growth there. And so that's because we've increased our transfer from the general fund to, um, for some capital projects. There's some growth in our healthcare fund. So even though the rates are staying, you know, pretty much the same for fiscal year 22, our healthcare plan is always growing. So as people retire and they're staying in the plan, we're hiring new people to replace those folks. And so when you think about it, the healthcare plan is actually growing, even if you've got, um, replacement of, of folks. Our Lou Gardens, um, fund budget has gone up. They had a strong fiscal year 21, even though, uh, we have waived some admission charges. They had a very strong holiday lights event. And their budget also includes some rate increases as well. Parking, we see a decrease there and, and, uh, we talked about that earlier. So that's due to, um, uh, revenues being, uh, lower into fiscal year 21. And then us, um, basically including a flat budget for that. The solid waste fund, that includes, that has increased, and that includes the 4% rate increase. Plus their budget also has some additional collection vehicles. And so that's why you see an increase there. We've got budgeted funds for the state housing initiatives partnership program fund, ship fund. And we've talked about the water reclamation. You see a decrease in the revenue fund. And right above that, the capital funds, there's a decrease in that program. Um, so those are the capital projects that Water Reclamation has requested. The reason that de, there's a decrease between last year and this year is they actually have more capital projects in mind, but we've limited it to what they can fund with the cash that they have. So we're continuing to refine that list of project needs. And anything above what can be cash funded, we're looking at a potential, um, debt issuance later down the road. And these slides have everything that I just told you. So this is our fiscal year 22 proposed capital improvement program by fund. And we can certainly get you any details that you want on the specific projects that are included in, um, within the, this capital improvement fund. But we've, we've talked about, um, the maintenance and improvements for parks, playgrounds, and recreation facilities. We've got some, uh, solar, um, energy efficiency projects in there. Uh, we have pavement rehab, um, OPD and, and OFD, equipment replacements, and then the outdoor fire training facility. Uh, we've got additional funding within the tax, the gas tax fund for pavement rehab as well. And then we've talked about the, um, capital program, um, at Water Reclamation due to improvements in Conserve One, Conserve Two, and also Iron Bridge. And then this is a breakdown of that capital improvement program by function. I'll highlight the two largest, um, ones, uh, economic development. That includes CRA, um, projects in there. The transportation line item also includes the gas tax and impact fees. And then, um, of course, Water Reclamation, their, their capital program is about half of, of the total program. And again, I know I went through the capital piece very quickly, but happy to get you all whatever details you want on that, um, when we brief with you. So our total recommended balanced budget we are presenting to you is just over $1.4 billion. Um, again, we're going to continue to refine it between now and September when we, we bring this budget to you for approval. But at this point, any additional, um, programming changes or expenses would have to be, um, funded through additional revenues, reduction of other expenses, or reduction of projects, in order to add those programming. So our next steps, um, where we are, we've got our budget workshop today. This afternoon, there's an agenda item to vote on the resolution to set the tentative mileage rate. We'll have briefings with each of you in early August. And then September, we'll have our first and second public hearings for, um, the mileage rate, and then also for the budget approval. And we got through a lot, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great presentation, Michelle. Would you introduce, uh, budget staff that are here with us today?
Absolutely. If I could have the budget team stand. Absolutely. If I could have the budget team stand. So this fine group of gentlemen here is led by Martin Carmody, our budget manager. We have Jason Voikovich, Ricky Vanderoff, Kevin Pierre, and Anthony Belisio. So thank you very much. And I want to thank the department, the department fiscal staff, the department directors as well, for really submitting carefully thought-out budget requests to help make our job easier.
You know, the one thing I'd like to highlight, I think, is the fact that our healthcare costs, I would put us up against any business, any government, anybody that has any employees that are on healthcare to manage the premiums in the way that we have. That just is great credit to the staff.
Absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Michelle. Great presentation. And also thank you to our accounting staff that, as you helped us navigate through some perilous times and unforeseen. And I can say the city of Orlando is in good hands and good standing. And thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in that also. And with that being said, we got a little money to spend, and I want to see how we can spend it in district. You know, as I was looking, I know I also would like a actuals and some line items, because right now it's kind of like great area where the funding is going. And I know staff, the executive staff gave you their wish list, and I know they've done a fine job, and I trust their leadership. There was something that I saw, mortgage assistance. And I know, were we able to do mortgage assistance, or we just did rental assistance?
Just rental assistance.
I thought so. I saw that on the slide. So that was obsolete. Is there opportunity to help some of our homeowners that have been impacted by COVID with some of the new rescue funding towards mortgages?
Yeah, I know in conversations with housing, they're eager to see some of those programs because they know that there are, you know, homeowners that are having issues paying mortgages. So I'm not aware of anything at this point, but we can certainly...
That conversation is being held.
Yeah, they're definitely keeping an eye out for those types of programs, though.
Thank you. Also, if you might be, and this might be another housing question. I know Mayor Dyer and this council has been laser-focused on homelessness and housing first. But also, you know, everyone isn't going to be housed, unfortunately. They're not mentally capable of being housed, even though as we're trying to create these housing-first models, and especially in our downtown core, Yola Park, and also the Paramore area, where we have some of our difficult citizens experiencing homelessness that need a little bit extra. So is there any funding with the American Rescue Plan that will address our mentally, mental health and substance abuse and purchasing or working with a organization to place them in a facility or some type of triage, and until we can get them stabilized so that we can house them? Is any of that money's going towards that because it's much needed?
Okay. We'll certainly make a note of that as staff is putting together potential projects that, and homelessness, as you've seen, is one of the focus areas of those ARBA dollars. Yes, ma'am?
We can. I'd like to meet and talk further about that, because it does impact all of the city of Orlando and throughout central Florida, but primarily because we have the most service centers there in the Paramore area, Mayor. It's really an issue. So I know we'll be able to work on that. The downtown revitalization funds with economic development, is that downtown revitalization including Paramore? Because Paramore is considered downtown. Do we know?
You mean within the ARBA dollars?
Yes.
I think...
Or is it just their business district downtown?
I think those are the general guidelines. I don't know that there's been any specifics.
Okay, if I can get an update on that footprint and the funds, and whomever to speak with on that.
Yep.
And while we're on the economic development dollars, of course, I'm a huge supporter of Strive and the incubators and all our community partners. They gave a great presentation. But I also, for a few years now, been requesting and going throughout the state, looking for a small business incubator model, especially there in the Paramore community, which we were on our way. But, you know, progress happens, and some things has to happen. And we had one in the Creative Village, and I'm hoping we can replace that since we do have some dollars. I know we spoke with UCF here at the presentation. They said they were willing to somewhat go down that path. So if we can find out more about that, Mayor, and how that might look before September or so. And I think the other was more, so I know Lisa and her team has been huge on this, and I've been working with them. The trauma program and funding for youth trauma and family trauma, and our urban core, of course, with, I know Chief is also focused on that, and funding towards, and finding a community partner. Of course, we're not able, as a city, to implement those trauma programs. But if we had some funding, I know OCPS and some others are partnering with us or want to potentially partner with us to find some funding for that in our recreation centers throughout the city where we find these violent crimes and people are suffering from trauma, and youth substance abuse. You know, while we're addressing it with our homeless core, we have youth that are, you know, becoming addicted to substances, and their families quite don't know what to do, and they're 14 and up, and younger, especially during COVID. We have found that, you know, this is prominent. So if we can look at that also, and talk more about it, with the dollars that are available now, that 58 million. And I guess, Rick, the other piece, I know you've been working on this, and it's probably getting ready to happen there in Public Works, in Tanya and Transportation, if we can look at the Harrison Estate and see where we're at with the infrastructure and the Mercy Drive infrastructure, I would hope to get an update on that. I know Harrison Estate is long overdue, but I know it's on the way. So if we can find out more about that. And Orrin, with the rehab program and down payment assistance. I know we had to, because there wasn't any dollars for a few years, and I'd like to know more about that program now that there are some housing dollars possibly coming online. And last but not least, I have one more, is I didn't see any blueprint items there. So I'd like to know more about how are we getting ready to fund and not dissipate. I know we have some plans with blueprint, but I would like to see it actually in our budget versus not there and at sunset. So I'm really concerned about that. Mayor Dyer, myself and this council really have done a tremendous job when it came to that stipend program and working with community partners in Valencia and Career Source. To, I think we've got close to 300 people, Mayor, that have graduated through our program in the last couple of years to higher wage jobs. So I would like to see that implemented back into the budget. And last but not least, the city has grown by leaps and bounds, and there's more people thinking this, moving to the city of Orlando weekly. I know Lake Nona is booming over there, and getting ready to get a whole new group of residents. So congratulations on that Disney piece, Commissioner. And our aides are just overwhelmed with one aide. And hopefully, with the growth that we're seeing in the city, that if there's a possibility, this is on the wish list, and I might get an echo from the other commissioners, that we need one more staffer in our office, as the city has grown, to make sure that we deliver quality and excellence in each and every one of our districts. I think one is, they're doing a great job, but as we have grown over the last four years, they have really served us well. But additional help on that budget piece right there, hopefully if you all can consider that, we'll be grateful. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheen?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm mute.
There we go. Okay, good. I just wanted to thank the budget staff so much, because I've been here long enough to where I remember when we did not get our briefings and our budget to actuarial reports in a timely fashion, and we only got them in a quarterly fashion, and we were always having budget problems. So I appreciate the fact that you all have been transparent. You've been on it every single month. And that's the only way to make sure that we're within our balances, is to make sure we're balancing our budget, just like we balance our checkbooks. If anybody does that, anybody, check your balances and things like that. We didn't do that for a long time in the city of Orlando, and we had some really bad practices. So I want to thank you all for the responsible budget practices that you have, that we can, that we on this council can go and look at these every two weeks. That's remarkable. And I know, you know, there's a lot to put in place, but it's really, really important, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I think something that we've got kind of a hit on, Mayor, is our housing, and it's not reflected in our budget, because there are pass-throughs from the state and from the federal government. It might be nice to somehow to put in our budget process the pass-throughs so that we can show people that we are working on housing and other things, and that we're not just ignoring it, because it looks like such a small percentage of our budget, even though Orrin and his group are doing a lot. So I think that's an important thing to be able to highlight somehow. I don't know the best way to do that. And I think it's important to talk about Save Our Homes and the commercial cap and the impact it's had on our revenues, because every so often, someone says, why, you know, why did you cut this? Why did you do this? And it's important for us to be able to say, look, y'all, that was $39 million that we don't have in our budget because you voted for tax reform, and we have less money, so we have to do less with less. That's what you asked us to do, from a business perspective. So don't ask for extra services when you are asking us to cut our money, our budget. So I think that's important information to have, to tell people. And even though, yes, we did get $1.9 million in ship, that's not what we're entitled to. We should still talk about that, because that is a tax on dock stamps. The real estate industry put that in place to go to affordable housing, and it's not fair that the state government raids that every single year. I'm glad that we get half of what we're supposed to get, but we shouldn't have to beg for half of what we're supposed to get. We should be getting all of that and returning that for affordable housing in this city. It's very, very important. And I'd also like to see, because we're continuing to be the number-one pedestrian fatality list. I hate that we're always on that. I've been here 20 years talking about this issue. But I think that we need a sidewalk construction line item and talk about what we're doing to build sidewalks to keep people from being harmed. I think that's a really, really important thing in this city. And I fuss about this every year, and I'll add it to my list again. Virginia Drive between Lew Gardens and Mills Avenue, looks like a third-world country road. I don't know, and I know it's county and city. We've been fighting over this for about a decade now. But if my residents can't use a city road, it looks like, you know, they don't care if it's Orange County or if it's city of Orlando. Drive head west between Lew Gardens and Mills Avenue. It's embarrassing, you know. It is over where I live, I'll say that. But I got to go to my residents at Colonial Town and say, yeah, we can't do it because we can't get along with the county. You know, we need to start, I mean, we've got a very good county government. Some folks have retired over there. They keep saying there's all these issues. I just want us to be able to get our roads fixed in a timely fashion. I don't think that's too much to ask in one of the greatest cities in America. So, thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I'd like to just kind of touch on, because I know we're looking at this from the highest level, and then we'll get down to the others. And I know we've got some meetings coming up, but a couple of things that come to mind. It would be nice to look at the actuals and projections, just to kind of, because what comes to mind, and when I look at this, is the projected budget revenues for venues. Where do we actually look at projected compared to what we had budgeted? So that's one of the things I'd kind of just, I mean, we look at it, and I think I'm looking more for analysis from y'all of the annual cost, not necessarily the quarterly cost. So the second thing is the copy of the PowerPoint. Is this going to be online so people can look at it and share it? How do we get this information out? It's going to be online?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it'll be posted online.
Perfect. All right. Commissioner Sheen mentioned something which I think is important. The proposed COVID money coming in, how is that shown on the budget? Is it passed through and not included on the budget? Have we anticipated some of that and put it into the budget line item? Because I know some of that's going to be able to pay for staffing that we did, and at the same time, some's going to be passed through as like an emergency fund. How is that reflected on the budget? I know you've given us the detail, but is any of that in the budget?
It is in the budget. So all of those housing grant funds that we get, is, they're just, it's not in the general fund.
Right.
It's going to be in separate housing funds. So yes, the revenue is budgeted. Whenever we get notified that we're receiving these funds, then it goes into our revenue budget. As we spend those funds, it's getting expensed. So it's certainly reported. Now, it's consolidated, all of that activity is consolidated, but we're happy to, we can get you some more details, certainly, on those at our briefings. But yes, it is certainly recorded in our budget.
I think the idea is that pass-through funds that come through, that go to something specific, that we are performing, providing services for constituents directly. A portion of that, obviously, I think, if I remember, allows us to help fund the staffing that we have.
Yes.
And then a portion is just pass-through money. So the idea is that it's really a little bit separate from general revenue, but it's also included in the same general revenue. And I think that Commissioner Sheen's on the right track. We're doing a lot of stuff that I think is good stuff, but it's not as easily identifiable to be able to talk about what we're doing. We see things that come to us every week or two of important expenses that we would want and how it's coming to us. But in the budget as a whole, it's a little bit less reflected. So anyway, that's one whole thing. The last thing is, and I just mentioned it to you, I don't know where this needs to go. There's a $1,000 first responder fund that's supposed to be coming to police and fire and first responders. Is that in here, or is that going to happen before the budget time? Do you know anything about that money?
Yes. So that money is actually being paid from the state directly. And so our only involvement is to get them a list of those first responders that would qualify for those payments and to send that list to the state. But otherwise, they're handling the actual payment, so it would not go through our budget.
Okay. So they're paying, the state's paying the people that we tell them to pay, effectively?
Yes.
As opposed to paying us and letting it?
Correct.
I'm just curious, how are they handling benefits and expenses, and are they just making a state bonus?
It's just a cash payment to them, to those qualified.
That's, every time we talk about doing anything, giving a gift card to a staff member, we have to worry about taxes paid as a bonus. But the state can just flip and do a $1,000 bonus and not have to worry about it.
I assume they'll probably have some kind of tax reporting, some kind of 1099 form that they'll issue.
That's just a little bit crazy. But that is not included, because I think that's going to handle, it's coming separately, and also it's coming right away. I think it's coming something very quickly?
Yeah, we're, the deadline of when they need to get that listing of qualified staff is coming up fairly soon. So I don't know what their timing is of when they're going to actually pay that out, but you're right, it is in the very short term.
And then the last, which I think, I mean, you glanced over, because you just went over so much stuff. But the idea is that 47% of our general revenue is property tax, and 54% of our general expenses is just police and fire.
Yes.
I have said that kind of, you know, for five or six years. When somebody looks and they look at their actual tax bill... they look at their actual tax bill and realize that everything they pay in taxes would go to police and fire, and that's not enough. So the, the work that we do and the work chiefs that, that y'all do to bring in outside revenue and, and other bonuses that, and grants that come in, we can't accomplish our task without that. And I want to tell you how grateful I am for the work that you do allow us to, to accomplish that task as well. So the rest, I'll cover in the small stuff. And will there be a kind of a budget, a pre-budget detail like we got, that executive summary that's going to come to us?
Yes, we'll have a budget and brief that will be issued in about a week. And then you'll also have your commissioner notebooks as well in about a week.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Great job, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, staff.
All right, thank you.
Michelle, none of the other commissioners want anything, so it should be easy for me.
Okay, let's, we get to move into agenda review.
Hi, my name is Miss Alana. I'm from the Universal branch of the Boys and Girls Club. And for today's fine art activity, we're going to do a layered watercolor picture. So we're going to learn how to work with watercolors and how to blend them, and then also how to do a layered cutout picture frame on it. So we'll get our materials together, and let's get started. Okay, so the first thing we need for our project is a piece of paper. This is a thicker kind of mixed media paper, and it is eight and a half by 11. And then we need a pencil, and then a set of watercolors. You can have a bigger set like me, or a smaller set, doesn't matter, we can mix our colors. And then a pair of scissors. And if you have your parents' permission, you could use an X-acto knife for this project as well. You need a cup of clean water and a large paintbrush. You're also going to need some glue. It can be pretty much any type of glue, school glue, taffy glue, or glue stick, just depends on what you have at your house. And then here's the full list of materials that we're going to use for this project. So go and grab them, get everything together, and then we're going to start on the project. So the first part we're going to do is we're going to take our piece of paper, and we're going to fold it in half. This is the hamburger style type of folding. We're going to make sure our edges line up with each other. And then you can press down. And you can even grab your scissors and help flatten that corner edge on both sides. And now we are going to open this, and we are going to cut these papers into two. So following that line we just did by folding it, we're going to cut these papers into two And so for the first part, we're only going to use one of our pieces of paper, so the other one we can put aside.